Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council Regular Session Meeting for Tuesday, May twenty fourth, seven oh three here in the council chambers. After calling the meeting to order, we'll go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and start down here with Counselor Jones for a roll call.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Hamilton, here.
Counselor Garboden, present.
Mayor, Mayor.
Here.
Counselor Hall.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
President.
Counselor Nordoff.
First.
Okay. Number three on the agenda is a consent calendar. Is there a motion for number three?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just a reminder that three B has been moved. It will be moved to after the consent. So any motion for approval of the consent counter would need to exclude B as a point.
Thank you. So is there a motion from the council on consent calendar?
I think the consent calendar minus item B.
Okay. First from Counselor Garboden, a second from Counselor Ball. Is there any discussion?
I would like to pull the item off the calendar from the minutes. From the special meetings.
You just did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm not organized right here. There they are. Yeah, we moved B. Got it. Yeah, right. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar minus three B. We had a first and a second. Is there any discussions? All in favor of approving the consent calendar minus item three B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At three B then is the item. The approval of a special called meeting minutes from April twenty ninth that has been pulled. Are we looking for a motion for that? Is there a motion for the item B?
I would make a motion to include Mr. Dennis Steinman's rebuttal to the allegations as an attachment to the minutes.
Okay, I have a motion from Counselor Nordoff.
My second.
The second from Counselor Schultz. Any discussion?
I would like to comment that whereas in the minutes, it says that Counselor Nordoff's attorney, Dennis Steinman, presented the eight allegations. That's incorrect. He really presented a rebuttal to the eight allegations and it was a nine-page rebuttal, very detailed, as detailed as the allegations were. And so I would also like to suggest that the text of the minutes is amended so that it says that he presented a rebuttal rather than he presented the eight allegations. That makes no sense and that's not what happened. That is not factual.
Okay.
So that's my very small change to the wording in addition to including the rebuttal as an attachment. I'm sorry, I don't have much voice tonight.
All right, so we are in discussion right now on this item. I will ask our attorney if he wants to make a comment on this.
Yeah, I think some clarity on the on the motion might be appropriate here because we've had a motion, a first and a second, and then during the discussion period, and I guess an amendment to the motion. So Counselor Nordoff, if you'd like to potentially amend your original motion so that it's clear as to what is being voted on, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. I move to change the wording on the minutes to say that Counselor Nordoff's attorney, Dennis Steinman, presented a rebuttal to the eight allegations. And the second part of my motion is that the rebuttal, the nine-page rebuttal be attached to the minutes of this meeting.
You can.
Can we change, can we change the wording to rebuttal and not do the attachment?
Isn't that what we got, Sam?
Yeah, we, they gave us a copy, but she wants it attached to the minutes and I didn't know. Can we just change the wording to a rebuttal and not do the attachment? I don't, I didn't, I don't know. Do we usually do attachments to minutes?
Mr. Wolf.
The attachment is nine pages. I'm just asking.
So, Mr. Wolf, would you be able to answer that? And I'm having a hard time hearing. I don't know if we can turn that up at all.
It's like it's coming from over there.
Yeah.
You're having a hard time hearing me?
Yeah, it's a little muffled. I don't know. If it's in house here or.
I'm so shocked.
Is this any better?
Not necessarily, but I'm wondering if it's here. We have a speaker off. I think it's a speaker in our room. So do you bear with us for just a minute?
Those are out there as well as the cameras.
Okay. It might, I mean, we can hear you. I just have to strain a little bit. Um.
We try that.
Okay, so we have, so we had our first and our second. We're in the middle of the discussion. Mr. Wolf, was that more, you were asking for clarity from Counselor Nordoff to to see what we're voting on here?
Yeah, and then there was a question from Counselor Schultz about.
I just didn't know if we usually add attachments to the minutes.
Correct, and and I don't know that you do and you're not required to, the you're required to. Well, A, you you audio record, video and audio record your minutes, so you're in compliance with the law. Written minutes are required to have a reference to any document discussed at the meeting. I don't recall the document being presented to the council until after the meeting had adjourned. So I don't believe it is necessarily appropriate to even include a reference in your minutes to that document. So the council could certainly consider amending the minutes to reflect that Attorney Steinman presented a rebuttal to the eight allegations. But I don't, I don't believe it's appropriate to to include the specific reference to the document as it wasn't provided until the meeting was over.
Okay, I would also like to add to the discussion that this, that the process is, is to to review the minutes and then to contact the staff or the attorney with any suggested corrections beforehand so that they have an attempt to review. To review the the video if needed, and we're not doing that once again. So I just want to make sure that that is added to this conversation so that that we're, the council is not following the process.
So the the process is that the counselor should normally provide that information as soon as possible. But your your rules do provide up until the the minutes have been approved, somebody can pull them and 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 ask for a motion. It would certainly make staff's life much easier if 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 these requests came in sooner rather than later, so that the prep work could be done.
Okay.
But we're still properly before the council here.
Okay.
But we're currently talking about both of the things happening, right? The changing of the word rebuttal and the attachment. Would we have to, if we wanted to just do the rebuttal, if we were like, the wording could be changed, would that be a whole different motion?
Yeah, that would, that would be a motion simply to amend the minutes to reflect that Attorney Steinman presented rebuttals to the eight allegations.
Because I know that we are given a timeframe, and sometimes people just don't see it in time, and so I just don't know if that's the case.
So is there an amendment to that motion?
I would like to also add that we, when we pass an ordinance, we include, we allow for a dissent to be attached to the minutes where we adopt the ordinance. So this is not unheard of, attaching something to it for what it's for.
Okay, we have, so we'll go ahead and call the question. But.
So I, I think we need a, we need a clear motion.
So currently, though, we did a first and a second. We had discussions, so we would have to talk about that one first, though, right? Or could she amend it?
She, Counselor Nordoff amended her original motion to include both modifying the minutes to reflect that it was a rebuttal and to add the written letter to the minutes.
Yeah. Okay, so that is the, the amended motion is to modify the minutes and add the word rebuttal to the motion. We had the first, the second, the. Yeah, okay. Do we have, so do we have, do we, we need a second for the amended motion?
So, Madam Mayor, I know it's complicated. So there was a motion made. The motion was expanded. There's a second. And so it was behoove, and then you had discussions. So it behoove to restate the motion, which your city attorney can do, and then call the question to find out if the expanded motion passes or fails. And then you can reconsider subsequently any business of the council regarding the minutes at that time.
So, Mr. Wolf, we're going to go ahead and call the question. Do you want to restate the motion that was, I'm going to actually, let's finish this piece here and then we can move on to whatever comes up next. Would you like to restate the motion that's on the floor?
Sure, the the motion was to amend the meeting minutes to include or to amend the statement that Attorney Steinman made rebuttals to the eight allegations and to include the written rebuttal as a part of the minutes packet.
Okay, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay. So do we need to have a roll call vote here? Because it wasn't clear to me.
So you add the nays. Go ahead and ask for the.
Okay, so.
Are there any nays?
Are there any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so the motion failed.
Is there a subsequent motion?
Yeah, so is there a subsequent motion to, again, we are looking at item B?
I move to amend the minutes so that they read that Dennis Steinman, Attorney Dennis Steinman offered a rebuttal to to the allegations.
Second, okay, we have a first and a second. I think I heard from Counselor Garboden. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear here about it's the word rebuttal that needs, that wants to be used instead of.
Instead of the rebuttal of. Was it to say presented a rebuttal of the eight allegations?
Yeah, presented a rebuttal of the eight. Okay, so we had the first and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, um, let's see here. So the consent calendar and all that, we're going to move on to, let's see, verse four here.
Public comment.
Four is public comments. Okay, do we have any public comment online?
No public comment online.
You said we do? No public on online, just some here in person. All right, we'll go ahead and begin with public comment this evening. I want to say thank you for participating in public comment this evening. Public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. And each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking any notes of any action that is needed. So we'll go ahead and begin with Chris Castleman. Chris, come on forward. I believe that you are, as mentioned before, you're not a resident of North Bend or Coos Bay, but you live in the county, correct?
Sure.
Okay, just like to know who's speaking to us and where they're from.
Sure.
And we're going to go ahead and have the city recorder. Is the timer button work or do you need us just to?
It is not working currently.
Okay, will you let us know when the three minutes is up? All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
May I close the doors because it's getting really?
Let's ask maybe one of the the chief to close the doors.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, all right, when you're ready to speak, our city recorder will go ahead and start the timer.
So I'm Chris Castleman. I reside outside city limits. I do not reside in North Bend, so why am I here? I'm here because, well, I ran for office for a county position and a lot of people reached out to me from North Bend and said that they have something that's concerning, that they would like me to help address. It's the contract amendment for the city administrator. They saw that it was increasing by thirty five thousand dollars this year and they found that very concerning. They know that I'm interested in transparency and fiscal responsibility and they asked me to be here. What's at stake with this vote is the potential erosion of public trust. And what I mean by that is the public entrusts you with being fiscally responsible and managing the tax dollars. And if if that trust is eroded, when you go and ask them later for a tax levy for like the sanitary or sewer or streets or road or stormwater or public safety, they're going to say no. They're going to say, no, you haven't been good stewards of tax dollars, so we're not going to give you more. If you look at page twenty of the budget that you guys just went over at the last meeting, David Milliron, the city administrator, he had a budget message. The second to last paragraph, the very last sentence, "He speaks of fostering innovative solutions to our challenges," and this is the important part, "by leveraging community engagement and dialogue." That's why I'm here. That's why people asked me to be here. It is important that you engage with the community on this issue. We just sat through the budget meeting and they presented some numbers. Two hundred and sixty one thousand in the general fund is being budgeted to raise salaries to a market level. Four hundred and eighty one thousand for all the general, for all funds. That's an alarming number. And then the thirty five thousand for the city administrator, that's an alarming number. So budgeting is about hard choices, very hard choices in this climate. And if we erode public trust by making these decisions to just hand out these market raises to people at a time when money is difficult to find, I mean, you guys are talking about a two-point-three-million-dollar deficit for the next fiscal year. People are not going to be willing to give you more of their tax money in the future. So that's what the vote tonight is about. I would suggest you table the vote or or amend it so that it's only reflective of a cost of living increase, maybe a minor merit-based increase, but not raising people to market levels that are outside of your control. The fire department just mentioned that they had fifteen years of the same employees and they were at the top of their pay scale, only getting cost of living increases.
Mr. Castleman, we're at the three minutes. Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you.
And go ahead and call the next person, Joseph Monahan from the city of North Bend. Hello, Mr. Monahan.
Hello.
We're going to go ahead and you've got your mic there and our city planner who's acting as city recorder tonight, we'll go ahead and begin the timer when you're ready.
So in three minutes, can I just stay away?
What's that?
Can I just sit here for three minutes and not say anything?
If you like to, yeah.
So one of the things I'm here about is meeting minutes. It's gotten so down into the weeds that people are looking at, I said it this way, not that way. It's all public, it's all recorded. I watch it in the morning at work. You know, I see everything that's being said and that I can go back, back up and look to rehear it. The state laws have changed on meeting minutes. You keep a copy on video, all of that. You just need a copy of, you know, minutes on actions taken. You know, how much time is staff time spent typing up the minutes, proofreading them, and then it goes out to somebody else to proof and get back? So we're looking at, you know, saving staff, staff time and energy, trying to work on things and just cutting through all the stuff and get right down to the bones. You know, I kind of look at some of the stuff on the consent calendar, the five thousand dollars for the library for microphones and audio visual. Why can't David just approve that? You know, he's doing the job that you hired him for. Give him the power to do that and he can just include that in their manager's update he gives you each month. Just put it in there. I approved five thousand dollars for these microphones, the grant funding. How much time is spent doing, typing those up, going to David to approve, to put on the agenda? He's already approving it to the agenda. So that's all I got.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
Next item is John Briggs. John Briggs, come on down, city of North Bend. Mr. Briggs, when you are ready to begin, our city planner who's acting as city reporter will go ahead and start the timer. The microphones in front of you should be on.
Pardon?
The microphones in front of you should be on if you want to speak into those, so it can be heard.
All right, okay. I will, in fact, I will speak louder than I should because it, number one, I hardly hear what the people were saying to begin with. Anyway, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is John Briggs. I reside at twenty thirty-five Cedar Court in North Bend. I am here to address the issue of the contract amendment for the city administering. I request that my combat comments be made a part of the written record and I did give a copy over there to the recorder. First, I want to the, address the issue of the base annual salary. I find that a twenty-four percent increase to be outlandish and an insult to those taxpayers that are receiving an annual social security increase of three-point-two percent this year. Counselor Jones has been nipping at my back in her letters of the editor, which indicate that I did not fully understand the implications of measure six-one-sixty-seven, which requires the city to ask us taxpayers to vote on new or increased funds. I want to know that major six-one-sixty-seven was a reaction to a prior council, which did not honor a vote of the people. Counselor Garboden, thank you for voting against the additional fifteen-dollar increase. Mayor Engelke, I believe that you now understand the unintended consequence of your vote, which is now affecting the current council and will continue to haunt future councils in the, in the future. Amazingly, seventy-five percent of the voters agreed with us. In return, we gave the city the ability to raise other fees already on the books on an annual basis because the courts reversed a similar initiative passed by the city of Ridgeport, which would have required a vote on an increase of library fees only, which the Fort County Court found to be unreasonable. Counselor Jones has been asking voters to come to budget meetings so that they can hear for themselves about the problems of cities. Good luck, Counselor. Your action and I will have a far more detrimental effect on the condition of budget than the action of our group, citizen group, and that it will be ongoing for our lives as well as the, those in the future, as there is no continuing offsetting revenue to match this expense. I note that beside the third, approximately thirty-four-thousand-dollar increase to the annual base pay, there will be a cost of living adjustment given later. This will be an additional one thousand eighty-eight dollars on top of the thirty-four thousand. There are additional taxes and as I recall, there may be additional purse costs as well. Then you have been asked to, okay, fifty percent match to his personal set section seven, four, the four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan, plan at a cost of fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars annually. When I add it all up, there will be an overall increase of over fifty thousand dollars this year. And it's not just there, it's annually.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. You're at the three minutes. So we'll go ahead and move on to the next public comment.
Well, I, I will just, I just finish it in this way.
Can you, can you give them fifteen more?
Look for a reasonable solution to your intended consequences.
Thank you. Uh, next public comment, is it Margaret, Margaret from the drone?
Yeah.
Okay, how do you say your last name?
Madrin.
Madrin.
Madrin. I have another kindergarten teacher who used to say like, oh, learn her name because it's like you're going to be mad and take a run.
Yeah.
So I'm here, I'm a forty-five-year resident of North Bend.
And first of all, I'd like to say that. Begin the timer, please.
Okay, I enjoyed the, taking a look at the strategic priorities and goals. I think that the update is really fantastic compared to the ones I saw previously. I really appreciate the the focus and all. And I wanted to preface what I have to say with, to insight our values for our city. We value a clean, attractive city with parks, open spaces, and recreational opportunities. We value a clean, attractive city with parks, open spaces and recreational opportunities. And I'm especially interested in the concept of play, be a vibrant community that uses amenities and growth minded growth mindset to create a warm and welcome environment to live, work and play. And I was thinking about having a growth mindset means we have to, we have to be willing to learn. We have to be willing to take, we have to be willing to go out on a limb uh and do things that are not so popular or that change what we've done in the past. I grew up with backyard burning in Minnesota. I have a lot of fa- fond memories of that. I mean, gathering around the old burn barrel and um other kids in the neighborhood throwing in the trash. We had a lot of fun. We thought it was okay. I personally had a burn barrel at my home of as recently as uh approximately one year ago. I had no idea that I was creating dioxin pollution for future generations by burning office paper. I just didn't know. I've learned. I won't do that again. And I would just, as I delve into the subject a little deeper, I've just been really shocked. And I I gave you copies of these two things. I thought I picked Minnesota just because that's where I grew up. And I thought that, I'll just see, do they still allow burn barrels and they don't. But um US EPA research shows that burn barrels are the number one source of dioxin in the United States. One burn barrel can produce as much or more dioxin as a full scale municipal waste combuster burning two hundred tons a day, one burn barrel. We have a hundred that are in force right now in North Bend and it's less than one percent of the population affecting everybody. These are legacy chemicals that are gonna be here for our grandchildren, for everybody to come, for our pets, for our animals, and I would really like us to take a beat, take, take a minute, think about it, see what kind of, I I think that we can make our community more livable, more practical, more lovely to be in and for to attract more lovely people who want to be here. I've loved living here for forty five years. I was a teacher here for thirty two years. I've, I really value the work that you all do and I hope that um we can take a a fresh look at what it means that we're burning in our neighborhoods on a routine basis. Um and I thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Next up, uh last public comment for the evening is Chuck Erickson. Uh Chuck, welcome. Chuck, you reside in the city of North Bend.
I'm gonna be pretty short, uh. I'm in favor of a burn barrel fan and I I'm wondering if it can be put on as agenda item for discussions in the council. Um I want to submit this document from uh DQ and uh, there's eight copies there. And I, I'm really sick of smelling it inside my house. I mean, during the summer, I can be eating breakfast and smelling plastic burning. I mean, it's I don't really have anything to say besides that. I'm sick of it. I am. And it's disgusting. It's, and they don't pay any fees. They don't pay any fees for the services they're getting. And the majority of people don't use burn barrels. We're paying for it. And you're polluting my organic garden. I pisses me off. So like, uh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment period. And that takes us to item number five, and that is the grade ordinance. Grade ordinance, is there a motion for um number five on the agenda this evening? There was a suggested motion on page forty four based off of our work session last night.
I move to approve grade ordinance number thirty four, which establishes the grades for First Street, Pine Street and California Avenue adjacent to block eleven in the Idaho addition in North Bend as presented in the staff report.
Should I guess? So can I, can I jump in here? Th- th- this is an ordinance, correct?
Oh, we we didn't do the thing.
Yeah. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna need to have a uh a motion for to have the first reading by title only?
I didn't read. Sorry.
Yes, I moved to have. Hold on for a minute here. Hold on, let me think for a second. So um yeah, I'm just okay. So number five is the grade ordinance. Do we need to?
Yeah, let's um uh uh go on if you would, Madam Mayor, to number six and I'll come back to you on number.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bump number five uh for now, because I think that we're missing a few documents from this. And we're gonna go ahead and if Mister Wolf, I'm just, we're gonna go ahead and put a pause on agenda number five right now and move to item six. Okay. Is, and then we'll come back to that. And that number six is the approval of a contract. Um again, there was discussion in the work session last night on this and um this is agenda item number um six. There's documents on page forty eight and is there a motion from the council?
I move to award the contract for level two mixing zone study to S H N engineers and geologists with a contract amount not to exceed a hundred and five thousand as recommended by staff.
Okay, and a first, first from Counselor Jones, second from Counselor Gall, any discussion? Um all in favor to move the con, um all, all in favor to move um to award the contract for level two mixing zone study to H S H N engineers and geologists with a contract amount not to exceed a hundred and five thousand five hundred as recommended by staff, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so let's see. So that was six. Um is there a motion for item seven? This is a contingent bid award on lumbar sewer meeting packet information on page fifty seven and discuss at the work session last evening.
I'll make a motion to award contract for black pearl paving and excavation amount of three hundred and twenty seven dollars.
Second, for a first from Counselor Hamilton and a second from Counselor Jones, any discussion? Okay, all in favor to award um the contract of black pearl paving and um evacuation in the amount of three hundred and twenty seven thousand and two hundred and forty eight dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Okay, number eight on the agenda is the city administrator employment agreement contract. And there had been discussion and materials provided to the council on this. Um and we have some information on page sixty five. Is there a motion from the council?
I'll make the motion to provide the city with the contractual three point two percent coal raise and a five percent call it a merit step, one phrase, whatever you want. Brings annual salary up to a hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and sixty nine cents, which is an annual increase of twelve thousand four hundred and fifty seven dollars and sixty nine cents.
Okay, first from Counselor Gar Boden and a second from Counselor Ball. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to, oh, you go ahead.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
Counselor.
You spoke first.
Counselor Jones and
But, you know, it's normal, it's more formal.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So um I understand both sides of this well. Um having hired people who've got paid a lot more than I did and it was worth it. Um and also how these numbers and salaries are huge. But I just want to uh put in an alternative scenario that we'll probably have to consider in the future. Um and as an, as an example. So the grant funds that we've been using to bridge the gap between what we bring in for our base and what we need um have, has been something that I don't think the city's done before and they've been coming in like gangbusters. And it's the reason why our, in particular, our police and our fire can stay uh their equipment and their staffers all on top of everything. I mean, and that's just the money part. They're doing all the work of actually executing on this. Um if we were to have paid uh just for the grant writing portion of that, not for the administration, which is a whole nother piece. Um we would have paid uh in excess of a million dollars in the last couple of years. So I totally get if we feel like our community can't support a pay raise for a highly paid position. And I also just want that information out there. Um for us to pay this in an alternative way would be very significant. Either you have to bring on a completely different staffer who's entirely focused on this and they're in the hundred K's, or we pay grant uh commissions basically. And it's significant. Um those grant funds, you know, maybe, maybe back in the day they were around five percent, now they're up to eleven percent. And so this is the kind of calculus we're making here. Um and so it, I understand this isn't popular. I understand uh all of the difficult discussion that we've had. Um and I would support more for this, but I just want everyone in the room to know that there are um it would have cost us a lot more to do this another way, a lot more. And I just want to.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Nordoff?
I had asked yesterday for um the finance director to uh let us know the cities that were referenced here and I will, I will say their names. Astoria, Newport, Cottage Grove, Malala, which is southeast of Portland. Uh Lincoln City, Florence and Silverton. I had asked what the general fund amounts were for, for those cities. I've, I've not heard anything from um our finance director, Mister Bridgens, but I also would like to point out of these other cities how many full time employees they have. Because I think this has a bearing on the amount of the city administrator's salary should be kind of somehow linked to the number of employees that are being supervised. Malala, uh and and also one other point. We are in a position round, rounded by the bay on three sides for the city. We cannot grow and absorb more territory. We're kind of landlocked that way. And that makes a difference also in the size that we can grow to. Malala has, and and I'll start with our own town, North Bend has three point nine three square miles. And we have roughly seventy employees. I think that's correct. The other cities, Malala is two point five square miles and it has sixty five employees. Lincoln City has six square miles and has a hundred and sixty employees. So that is roughly almost one hundred employees more than we have. And I'm not sure that we can consider that as comparable. The next city would be Cottage Grove, which has uh three point, it's basically four square miles and they have eighty seven employees. That's roughly uh twenty employees more than they, than our city has. Astoria has six square miles. We did not get the um number of employees. Cus Bay has ten square miles and a hundred and twenty nine employees. The city of Newport has nine square miles and has a hundred and sixty five employees. So I'm asking with a hundred more employees, how is that a comparable city to our city? Silverton has three point five square miles and it also has sixty employees. Um and the last one, Banden, has roughly three square miles and forty two employees. So that's less. But there are cities here that have a hundred and sixty employees, eighty seven employees, a hundred and sixty five employees and a hundred and twenty nine employees. That is not a comparable city for our purposes of comparison on city administrator fees. I'm sorry, city administrator wages. It doesn't, it's apples and oranges. It is not, in my opinion, an accurate comparison based on the size of the city and based on the number of employees. And I'm not sure that I have an answer to my request for a general fund comparison of these cities. I think they're much larger. I think they're wealthier and I don't think it's a fair comparison when we're talking about a twenty four percent salary increase and the other additional benefits to this employee. And I, I'm sorry, but I, I'm not buying it. I don't think it's comparable at all. And why throw out Baker City? Baker City, uh yes, it's in the east part of the state. However, it's probably about the same size and probably as geographically isolated as, as our little city is. We're not right next door to Portland where people come in and and support our, our tourism. It's not the case. So
I think you're approaching
Mister Bridgens. Did you get any information on the general funds like we discussed yesterday?
Um, thank you, Counselor Nordoff, for your comments. And um if you, I think um uh just a note on that, um Portland State University um has very valid sal- salary surveys, but I'm sure they're always interested in hearing your feedback on the things that you suggest on how their salary surveys should be um de- done differently or better. Counselor Schultz, did you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to remind, I just want to be reminded that we did not pick those cities.
Yeah.
We paid someone and they, they chose like the surveys that they provided, that is the, that is what they chose to do. So again, that would be a complaint to them, like we aren't picking random places. They picked it, like we didn't get to pick them. Um I do like that uh Jeff did provide us with local, that he did provide us with some local areas. So he mentioned Banden, he did too. Um he mentioned Cuz Bay. He, he did provide us with Kokil as well. So I think even though we didn't, we had the survey, but then we also, he was doing comparatively as well. And then the motion currently though is related to the three point two and the five percent.
Yeah, there's a motion.
Say, yes, on topic.
Thank you. So we have any other further discussion, Counselor Hamilton?
Yeah, I wanna say is um you know, I mean, when you look at, when you look at an employee, you have to look at multiple things. So in what I know of like, let's take the U R A and what the U R A has done in the last twenty years and what's it done in the last four years? Has it, has it done better, worse? I mean, we're, our, our, our thinking and path forward as to how to tackle these items with our budget. Do we have a better outlook on them now than we did before as a city? I mean, that's the thing that I'm looking at. Uh what's our, what's our city services look like? What's our infrastructure of a city, the plan going forward? Uh is it better? Uh will we, are we able to grow tax dollars and grow the fund versus no idea on how we're gonna pay for things in the past? Like that's what I'm looking at is like, you know, you, you have somebody that's trying to drive this big bus and are we, are we going in a really good direction or are we not going in some good direction? I think he's taking the city in a very good direction, in my opinion, but that's just me, so. Let's probably leave it there.
Okay. Alright, so the motion is um uh all in favor of a merit increase of five percent and a cola increase of three point two. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, one opposed, motion carries. Alright, next item of business is
We'll do that one, sorry.
Yes, number five. Okay. Thank you, still warm. Hmm, okay, so number five is a grade ordinance. Um number thirty four establishing grade for First Street, Pine Street and California Street. Um Mister Wolf, this brings us to ordinance thirty four establishing the grade for Fur, Pine and Street, California Block adjacent to uh block eleven Idaho addition to North Bend. I'm gonna now ask the staff to give the report. Um
Our mayor is many, mayor, members of the city council. Uh forgive me on this for not bringing it, because this is actually an ordinance required by an ordinance, so it's a little more confusing than bringing forth a new rule. This is actually something required by our rules to perform. So uh what this ordinance does is establishes a grade of First Street from Virginia to California. Pine Street from Virginia to California Street and California Street from Lincoln to Pine Street. Uh grade ordinances are required in order to set the grade of the street. in order to set the grade of the street to verify the safety of the street's construction and to establish grades for utilities to be constructed prior to the street being built itself and/or if they're not built at the same time. Uh, staff has reviewed proposed grades and provided, prepared a written legal description of those grades for you to review. Um, staff's recommendation as you approve the grades as presented in the ordinance.
Okay, don't go anywhere. Because now is the time for the council and staff to discuss ordinance thirty-four. So, um, council, is there any thoughts or questions for the staff on, um, ordinance thirty-four?
I just thank you for the detail on the discussion yesterday.
Okay, so we will have a public comment period specific to I am ordinance thirty-four. Um, is there anyone who wishes to speak to ordinance number thirty-four? Okay, Karen and seeing none, I'll now entertain a motion to have the first reading be by title only.
I'm going to have the first reading of ordinance number thirty-four by title only.
I heard a first from Counselor Schultz and a second from, I believe, Counselor Garboden. Um, uh, Mr. Wolf, um, we have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the ordinance, the, all in favor of the motion to have the first reading be by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, any nays? Motion carries. Mr. Wolf?
All right, thank you, Mayor. And if, if I am coming in, um, with the volume too low, please let me know.
We can. Continue, please.
All right, thank you. Grade ordinance number thirty-four. An ordinance established, establishing grades of California Avenue, Fur Street, and Pine Street adjacent to Block eleven Idaho addition to the city of North Bend, Oregon.
All right, um, I then will have a motion for the, um, ordinance thirty-four, for the second reading to be by title only.
I move that we have, uh, ordinance thirty-four by, for the second reading by title.
Second, like first from Counselor Gall and a second from Counselor Schultz. Um, any discussion? All in favor for the, um, ordinance, the second reading to be by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Grade.
Yeah, continue.
All right, thank you. Grade ordinance number thirty-four and ordinance establishing grades of California Avenue, Fur Street, and Pine Street adjacent to Block eleven Idaho addition to the city of North Bend, Oregon.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion to adopt, um, ordinance thirty-four.
I move to adopt grade ordinance.
Let's see. Mr. Wolf, am I doing that correctly?
Yes, you're doing fine. Continue. Roll call's next.
Yeah. I know.
He just wants to get out of here.
I move to.
I want that try to.
I move to approve grade ordinance thirty-four, which establishes the grades for Fur Street, Pine Street, California Avenue adjacent to Block eleven in the Idaho addition to North Bend. As in Staffordburg.
Okay, I had a first from Counselor Jones, second, uh, from Counselor Hamilton. Um, all in favor of adopting ordinance thirty-four. Uh, can I say it like that? Please say aye.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, you, you, you would have time for a discussion now at this point, and then it would be a roll call vote.
Okay, so, um, I'll go ahead and call a roll call vote for adopting ordinance. Uh, we had the first, we had the second. Is there any discussion? I see no discussion. Okay, with the first, the second, no discussion. We'll have a roll call vote. Counselor Jones, how do you stand on the ordinance?
For the ordinance.
For the ordinance.
For the orange.
For the ordinance.
For the ordinance.
For the ordinance.
And I too am for the ordinance. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wolf. I believe that is the, that would be the last piece of the item for ordinance thirty-four. Hmm, so, um, that takes care of five, six, seven, eight. Um, we had no executive session, so we don't have item nine. Number ten is the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, uh, the report is published online. A couple of things I want to, uh, highlight. Uh, new staff vehicles in the fire department, the Ford Explorers, which are the command vehicles, have arrived. They're being equipped with radios and emergency, uh, lighting. And, uh, also the rapid response vehicle, the second one, uh, has, um, arrived and is being readyed for, uh, service. Um, and just a reminder, bless you, uh, that, uh, these were purchased and outfitted, um, with American Rescue Plan Act, uh, funds. Also want to mention that the, uh, library, uh, foundation received um, uh, sixty-one hundred dollars from the Three Rivers Foundation. Uh, this will help, uh, further the, uh, children's, uh, room. Uh, the police department was also up in, uh, Florence with the library. They received, uh, ten thousand dollars and that will be used for, uh, purchasing seventeen active shooter response packs, um, that will outfit each of the police cars. So there'll be one in every police cars. There'll also be nine new tire deflacing devices. Um, they help, um, thwart, um, uh, high-speed chases, um, before they make it their way into the city and cause issues. Um, also on the, uh, land use, uh, development side, uh, we have, um, engaged information back to the state regarding, uh, our nine hundred thousand dollar allegation for infrastructure improvements, uh, aimed at affordable housing. And so we're waiting for some, um, additional, uh, details on fund disbursement, uh, which will be primarily used for sanitary sewer improvements. Aside from that, the rest of the report's online and a copy is in your mailboxes. So back to you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to eleven, which is our committee reports. I know Counselor Gall is going to report out on a meeting that he and I attended for the Fort Cuz Bay.
It's actually for the Cuz County Urban Renewal Agency. And, uh, it was really interesting because we've gone through all this, uh, urban renewal training and it, it, uh, it kind of woke me up that a lot of people don't understand what we went through. So they've got a chunk of money out there that they really don't know how they're going to spend. And, uh, but, but the main thing the, the meeting was for was a preliminary budget, just like Jeff did tonight. Uh, we're going, we're going back in a week and a half or something to, to finalize the budget and then get a plan on, uh, on what, how this urban renewal, renewal needs to go forward. They were even talking of maybe not having it anymore, the whole, the whole work. They've got several million dollars and they don't, we don't have a project. So, uh, I guess it's not all that thing, but there, there is concern on which direction we're going to go. But uh, I'll report back in a couple of weeks when we have the, the final meeting and have some more conversation.
All right, thank you. Thank you for serving on that, um, committee. Um, Counselor Hamilton, you ready to report out on the special events committee?
He can't.
You said you were good.
He can't wait till August.
We have a, a meeting tomorrow at noon.
Yeah, we're going to be tomorrow at noon there.
Yeah.
Special events committee meeting.
Yes.
And we're going to firm lots up, and I think you've already sent it to the safety staff.
Yeah, so we have the, um, the logo is starting to be, to be, to be, logo is being circulated. Um, we have, uh, our last meeting tomorrow will be the last meeting that we have before, um, the July Jubilee Ambassador Court. Students will be coming in for interviews. And, um, and that's, that'll be coming up on the, um, the following week. So we're really looking forward. We have a couple of student applicants already and we're expecting probably a few more coming in. So we're really happy about bringing, um, that tradition back. Uh, we have, uh, heard that there's going to be a few more, um, updates of some things that, um, are, uh, uh, that's coming from Stephanie Wilson and Melissa, um, Rice. So they'll be at the meeting tomorrow. Um, we do know that the airport is working, um, on, um, a potential way for them to be involved. There's, like I've said before, there's like a real hub of stuff that's happening at the mall. And it's neat that the South Coast Market that the mall is having on Saturdays will be now in conjunction with that. So it'll be really festival-like. Um, so we've got all the different things in play. Um, so we're really going to start probably pushing hard on, on social media, the events. Um, and out there, you'll probably also see a five K walk. Well, you will see, it's already out there on the city website, I believe, to sign up the five K, um, jaunt, the Jubilee jaunt, um, to sign up for that. And it's free, so all of you should participate. I'm excited. We can walk it together. We can run it together, however you want, but that's going to be a big part of the event. And then you're going to start seeing some information circulating about the honored citizen awards and will be the, the launch of that event will be right before the sip and stroll, um, that week on Friday afternoon at four thirty. Um, I believe we've secured a spot at the library. So, um, yeah, it's really, everything's coming in, uh, well, and it's going to be another great activity. Um, I'm really excited to hear about, um, one of the really special things is on that Saturday, um, the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Mercy Car. So we've got a lot of people that we're inviting out for that. So um, just keep watching, uh, the information come out and help me share it out to the community because it is a festival that our community hasn't seen for four years. And so we want to make sure that we, um, really get it on everybody's radar. And that is, um, my committee report. Okay, council comments. Um, Counselor Nordoff, we'll go ahead and start down at your end. Nice.
Sure. Um, I'm wondering why the city did not forward to the council the letter from the district attorney, seven-page letter concerning, uh, I requested under state law, I was allowed to request that he review the investigative report and the faction summary. And Mr. Milliron forwarded an email from Mr. Frazier to Mr. Wolf and said that Mr. Wolf would be responding to Mr. Frazier's request. And yet it's, I'm not sure that the city ever provided that seven-page letter from D A Frazier. I'm not sure that that was ever forwarded to the council. And and I forwarded it after the public hearing on my, uh, censure. But I never saw it come through. And, um, the city received the letter on the Wednesday before the hearing. And my attorney received the redacted investigative report on Thursday at about four o'clock. And then had Friday to work on it and had Monday to deliver it. Was, it's, it, I'm just not sure that, um, that the, the city council ever saw the district attorney's letter before you had the deliberations at the special meeting. I forwarded the document to you individually after the meeting. So that's, that's just my comment. It didn't seem, didn't seem right to me.
Okay, Counselor Schultz?
Um, we had our first budget committee meeting of this fiscal year. So thanks, Jeff, for, um, I think he is trying to, looking through it, separating some things and getting that clarification. I feel like it's always really helpful because I do think the budget is super complicated for people who aren't in budgets or just home budgets and not city budgets. And so understanding where all of that comes from and what it means. Um, I feel like this is my second year doing it, and so I feel like I have a better understanding. Um, it is still a complicated, it's just, it's, it's interesting to think about where everything is, and I appreciate you.
Counsel, is that it?
Yeah.
Counselor Gall?
Well, yeah, I did the, the budget. First part of the budget there tonight, uh, told us that no, it, it, nothing's, nothing's ever good when you start talking about the budget. We, we might be fine for another four or five years. Then it's going to start turning, and it, and it turns pretty simple. I mean, if you look at what the, not even remember what that number was, but it was a big number, six hundred and some thousand for, to, to boost everybody up. That, that's a big number. That's a half a million dollars, you know? Uh, but, but that's, that's where everything's going. So, uh, the budget's a tough one. And, and I got a comment on, on, uh, on my neighbor's comment there that it just seems like for the last several years, we've, we've had nothing but headaches over these minutes. And if there is, and I, you know, later on we can address it, but I think there is ways to where we don't have to have written minutes, and it might streamline everybody's life here. So, uh, I, I was a great comment and, and thank you. Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Garboden. Counselor Hamilton?
Um, I was trying to think, but.
I can go before you.
Can't even go.
So I, uh, I was shocked to find out that our band did very well at state. And I was even more shocked to hear that the fire department and the police weren't afraid of your town at one o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
I thought, I wished I'd known, I'd have gotten.
Yeah.
So good job on that, guys. Um, no, um, talk with people about the July Jubilee. I, um, attended the Saturday event at the Egyptian Theater where North Bend went against, uh, Cuz Bay in Family Feud. And somebody brought up a question about the events and somebody actually said July Jubilee and there was like six people that knew about it.
We've got to order more cake, Larry.
But it was, it was a really good event. It was pretty fun. Um, it was, uh, United Way hosted it. And North Bend pretty much smoked them all. So we did good.
Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, so. All right, that's all I got.
I got, okay, Counselor Jones, okay.
Uh, so I, uh, I'm hoping to, um, interest for Mayor John Briggs, who happens to be in the audience right now, if he would be willing to entertain using his network of people um, for, uh, collecting support for a garbage fee, because we need voter approval to get that. And you know, burning your trash is always difficult. So I was curious if we would be able to use our net, well, not mine, but your network for garnering public support for mandatory garbage fees, because we'd have to.
May I ask you a question?
I can, I will talk to you after it's adjourned. I was just inviting you and I'm sorry, I, yeah.
Let's, let's talk after the meeting adjourns. Yeah. Um, I do, thank you, Counselor Jones, for.
Yeah, burning trash is.
Well, and I, I like where you're going with this is that we are always looking for people, um, to join, whether it be the July Jubilee Committee, the Budget Committee, and, um, it's great that we have people show up for comment here and there. Um, but it'd be nice if we could have participation on these committees where we can really dig in on, on certain issues. So I, um, uh, I missed the Family Feud because I was at the district track meet over at North Bend High School. And it was really exciting. Um, there was, um, the girls, uh, took the district meet, um, and came out ahead and they're taking a handful of people, uh, with state. Uh, the boys held their own as well. And then you get to hear like that, how well the band competition when the, the kids band won state. So Bulldogs are really doing well this spring and it's nice to see all the activities back in the high school.
To add on to that, and I don't.
Well, yeah, what else are we missing here?
Reagan Farm, uh, Eric Farms' daughter. Today, I got to watch her play a an amazing tennis player from Plymouth Union that, that won state last year. And Reagan beat her today for being a district champ. So Reagan's a district champ. And it's going to be basically a rematch at state here in a week and a half. Yeah, so go ahead.
So I don't know what we're doing out there in North Bend, but we're growing some pretty good athletes. So I'm just like really excited and, and proud of everyone. And so, um, the application for the Jubilee Court, um, ambassadors is on the city website. And the applications are due, I believe it will say next Monday. So just do help me push that out there if you know any, um, students um, in the community who are interested in applying. I wasn't joking about that five K race, everybody. I'd love for you to join, uh, join me in a walk or run.
Right, side by side.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I will, um, I will also, um, mention that I'm always, we're always looking for different ways to connect with the community. And I've been doing these walk with the mayors, um, with Cuz Bay Mayor, uh, Joe Benetti, and we rotate back and forth, um, between the towns. And so the next one is, it's, and it actually be on a Tuesday, so it's a little bit of a different date change. We've been trying to hold them on Mondays. It's going to be Tuesday, the twenty-eighth at noon, um, and it is over in Empire. And, um, I need to firm up the location, but I wouldn't be surprised if we start at the, um, uh, Empire, uh, mural is where I'm guessing that they might start. Um, and you're also always welcome to come with me to any of those. I actually had, uh, the captain with me or the chief, um, um, at the last one and uh, um, it was nice to see some of the city staff. So it's just, it's an informal situation, getting to know the community members and just more of a casual conversation. Um, and, um, also I do want to make mention, because it was brought up earlier in council comments, if anybody has not seen the special called meeting, um, that we had, um, a couple of weeks ago, it's, um, posted on the, on the, uh, the, uh, on our, on our website.
Yeah.
Um, it does go through. Um, it does go through um the sustained findings um of uh uh that were found against Councilor Nordoff, including um a um potential um ethics violation and a violation of our oath of office. And I do think for the community members that are watching, it would be appropriate to go back and take a look at those and see why that this body had um uh, you know, called for her resignation. So I'm just going to go ahead and add that to my comments. Um, next on the agenda, I don't think there's any other business.
Um, Mayor, if I may, I'll take a uh, uh, I'm not really allowed to do this, but I will um, uh, ask for a, a point of personal privilege.
You may have a point of personal.
And so um, uh, first and foremost, um, I want to thank you for the raise. Um, uh, it's never easy. Um, I'm not going to stand in the way of, of my staff doing their job. We have a great finance director. He's a certified public accountant. Uh, he works with the foremost um group in the state, which is PSU. We use them for all of our salary compensation studies, um uh even with all of our bargaining units. And so um these are PhD-grade folks. He brought forth um information to you. You do your job, which is you have to balance it in, in the overall benefit of what makes sense uh for this community. Um, uh, I started my uh statement with, I thank you. I appreciate the five percent merit raise um and the um corresponding cola. Um, David Milliron's not going anywhere. We are a team. We continue to work together on the vision. Um, I always find it fascinating, you know, the keyboard uh uh warriors out there. Um, I love freedom of speech. Um, but I always encourage folks, if you want actually accurate information, come sit down, see the documents, read the documents. Um, uh, talk it through, because there's more to the overall story. And so um uh you all did what um councils need to do, which is to evaluate what's brought before you. Um, those are recommendations, and then you make a decision. And so I appreciate that because it's not an easy task to do. Um, as you know, I've sat in your uh shoes in a different city. Um, and um uh you're volunteers, and I know what it's like to have darts thrown at you on a regular basis or be in the grocery store and be pulled alongside and asked questions, or at a restaurant, or sometimes where your spouse just has to say, we'll just go in separate vehicles. And so I get that. So I do appreciate what you all uh have gone through and the process that you've gone through. And together we can and will make a difference. And so with that, thank you um for giving me that opportunity. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work. All right, so I believe there's no other items on this agenda, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting and move straight into the urban renewal meeting. So uh, Mr. City Planner, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn. And then I'm going to go ahead and open the urban rule. Okay, you're like, right now? Uh, welcome to the North Bend City Urban Renewal Agency meeting, agenda for Tuesday, May fourteenth. At eight twelve here in the council chambers. I will go ahead and call, what's that? Um, call the meeting to order and do a roll call.
Yeah, but, all right, we're trying to get the agenda updated, so I apologize.
That's okay. We're going to go ahead and call uh, have a roll call. Uh, so City Planner, if you'd help me here with count, or um committee member, Commissioner Jones.
Hi, Commissioner Jones.
I'm present.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Yes, we're here.
Yeah.
Larry's here.
He will return shortly.
Okay.
Barely. Right, it's been since five thirty, barely.
Hi, Commissioner Gall.
I'm here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Present.
Commissioner Nordoff.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so um tonight, um, we, I believe we have one person signed up for U R A public comment. And um, and nobody else online for that, correct? Okay, yeah. All right, so um public comment. Thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue with you, but rather a time for us to listen. Our executive director and city reporter are taking any notes um of any action needed. So I believe, uh, Mr. Castleman, you had a, signed up for public comment for U R A. And Mr. Castleman, um, not a resident of North Bend or Coos Bay, but lives in the county, for the record. That's part of. Yeah, I don't state the address anymore, but I like to make sure that I know what town that they're from.
Okay, uh, Chris Castleman, I reside in Coos County, just outside city limits. Um, I had a question. Um, I saw on the U R A uh budget that there is ten thousand three hundred dollars set aside for the ci- city administrator um for personnel services. Is that in addition to his contract with the city, or is that included?
So this isn't a time for us to have dialogue with you, but if you want to go ahead and state that comment, I can make sure that the city staff will go ahead and get back to you on how that works.
Yes.
On where that comes from.
I mean, can it, can it just be answered?
We don't, this isn't a back and forth situation, but we will go ahead and note your comment, and I believe we have a way to reach out to you.
I mean, it's a very simple yes or no question.
It's about setting practice.
Sure, but it's also like not unreasonable to just answer it.
So the hardest part of sitting here.
Yep.
It's to have them getting, you know, not you, but there's times when we're getting bird lift and everything else, and we can't answer, so.
The hardest part of sitting here is not getting an answer.
Yeah, we'll make sure that we get that answer back to you. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anything else?
I'm here online on the video so that the public can get that answer.
Yes.
Um, I mean, how much time do I have left?
You have about two minutes left.
I mean, should I just be an ass and sit here for two more minutes and ask it again? All right, uh, so I saw online when I looked up the uh U R A budget uh for the past couple of years, there's a line item for city administrator. And I'm wondering, because it says uh at the beginning of the budget, that U R A is a, is a separate legal and financial entity. So um I can look up David Milliron's city administrator contract with the city of North Bend. But when I read online that the U R A is a separate legal and financial entity, I'm wondering where is the contract to pay the city administrator of North Bend ten thousand three hundred dollars from the uh Urban Renewal Agency. So without that information, it appears like he's getting an additional ten thousand dollars on top of his city administrator salary. I wouldn't want that information to be out there if it's false, but I also would want that information to be out there if it's true. I do not understand for the life of me why that cannot be answered right now. How much time do I have left?
About one minute.
All right. Uh, so when I go online, I look up the budget for the Urban Renewal Agency, and for the past couple of years, there's a line item. And it reads uh ten thousand three hundred dollars for the city administrator. Um, it makes me wonder if he's getting an additional ten thousand three hundred dollars. Um, I wouldn't want to be wrong. I wouldn't want to tell the public that that is the case if it's not true. But it looks like to me that it is, and without an answer from you guys, um, I really don't know what to do with that information. Uh, it looks like the Urban Renewal Agency is a separate legal and financial entity from the city of North Bend. I cannot find online the contract that would award ten thousand three hundred dollars for the city administrator of North Bend. Um, do I still have more time?
Ten seconds.
All right, it, can anyone, want to give me an answer in the last ten, ten seconds? No, going once, going twice. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Um, and as a reminder, um, to everybody who's participating in um public comment, um, are um, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, it's not a time to have dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. And our executive director and city reporter will make sure we follow up with any person who has any specific questions and can answer those. So we'll make sure that we go ahead and do all of that. All right, so that was the only public comment that we have um on the Urban Renewal Agency. So that takes us to item three, which is the Urban, Urban Renewal Agency Consent Calendar.
I move to accept the Urban Renewal Consent Calendar as presented on my agenda.
All right, I had a first from Commissioner Jones, a second from Commissioner Garbonde. Um, any discussion? All in favor of the Urban Renewal Agency Consent Calendar um to be accepted as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four on the agenda is Gold Coast Security Installation. We had a work session, I am, I don't, um, on this last night. Uh, there is a recommended motion on page five for the commissioners.
I'll make a motion to, I move to approve payment to Gold Coast Security in the amount of five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars for installation of the new security system at the Visitor Information Center.
Sorry.
Okay, I had a first from Councilor Nordoff, a second from Councilor Garbonde, um, all in favor of the motion to approve payment for Gold Coast Security in the amount of five thousand one uh five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars for the installation of the new security system um at the visitor center. Please say aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number five is the U R A's executive director report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um, as you know, North Forty Beer Company is uh open and uh doing great business. Um, uh, we uh have um uh also the uh, we, we revised, uh, actually not revised, expanded their lease agreement. So there's a secondary lease agreement now for the patio, so they have uh that fully under lease. Um, so uh they love the improvement so much, uh, they put it under um a lease agreement. And so um that is uh doing great. Um, also uh South Coast Hospice, um, of course, you approved a Urban Renewal Agency facade grant. And so um uh they'll be um putting in the new fencing at the donation drop-off site. Uh, fresh coat of painting and some other uh upgrades, and so they're going to uh start that work um shortly. Um, and uh, aside from that, um, full complete report is on the website and linked also off of uh Nextdoor and Facebook and Facetube and everything else. So thank you, back to you.
Yeah, all right. Well, without anything else on the agenda, we'll go ahead and.